Discuss anything else we want to discuss. Okay. All right, I would like to open the May 1st, 2019, meeting of the Groveland Zoning Board of Appeals. Tonight, we have Kathy Franzen and John Stokes and myself, Jason Norman. We are waiting on one more member to show up before we can hear the application. We will be reviewing application 2019-1 for 299 and 301 Main Street. That'll be a continuation from the previous meeting. In the meantime, while we wait, we will review some office or some board business. Go over the minutes.
Sure. Did you guys have a chance to read them?
I did, a few minutes ago.
John, did you get a chance to review them? I had just a few comments, actually, on just small little changes.
I want to introduce Rebecca before we read them.
Sure.
I'd also like to welcome Rebecca Oldham. She's gonna be taking place as our board clerk.
She's doing a fantastic job already, keeping us.
Thank you.
Welcome. So, I did just have a few comments on the minutes. You lost the minutes?
I lost the minutes.
Yes, I have some minutes.
It might have been them.
Okay, so, the couple of comments I had is on page two, under public comment, about two-thirds of the way down, it talks about some comments from Mr. Connell, and it said, one of the sentences is, "There is no longer a non-conforming structure." I think that was supposed to mean, there's no longer a conforming structure. You see that? It's just read kind of backwards, but... And then, just a couple of other things in the italic section down at the bottom. Situation is temporary and will terminate, but there's like a, an L in there? I don't know, it's just more of a housekeeping thing. It's the second line of the italicize. And then, right after that, I think it's supposed to be "the"?
Yes.
Okay. And then, the second to last line, the very first word is "property."
Yep.
That should, that has an L in there, too.
Yep.
And, I think that was it. Oh, one last thing, is on the very last page. It says, under open discussion, the last line says, "Next meeting is scheduled for April 7th." It should've been May 1st, which is today. Everything else was great.
Mm-hmm.
All right. Can I make a motion to approve the minutes as amended?
I will second the motion. All those in favor?
Aye. Okay. Okay, we don't have any other business besides that, unless anyone wants to do open discussion.
Was there any, anything coming on 40B?
Not that I've heard. I don't know if Rebecca, have you heard anything about, any more information about the 40B coming first?
I have not.
Yeah, no, I haven't heard a word either.
No news is good news, or not?
I think the next step is wait for the state to get back to the town.
Yeah.
But, we haven't heard a word, so...
No, no, I haven't heard anything.
Not sure what's happening. So... Should we take a small recess till Chris gets here? At least we've done that part.
Fine with me.
All right. Motion to take a recess at 7:47.
I'll second that.
Great.
We're all in favor?
Yes.
He's busy. I think that, I think... Sure. Second that.
All those in favor?
And we have, Chris Goodwin has joined us. I believe there are some, there are modifications to the application. We'll review 2019-1. Do you, Mr. Yang, you want to come up and discuss the modifications? Do we have another microphone or can you grab?
Stand over there or you want to...
Oh, you could use the podium, if you want to.
Okay, my name is Zhong Ya. I'm the 299 301 Main Street owner. And from the last meeting, I mean, I have listening to all the opinion from the town, and I had to change the user more favorable for the town, and I dropped the hydroponic store, and I'm more favorable to open the low-traffic, like home improvement store, or even just like the boat, the new boat showroom by appointment, it can online store, and so will be no, I mean, very little or zero traffic, I mean, so will be not impact for any current condition, I mean. So, I'm also willing to work with town to make this side better, I mean, I can open up for the town of Groveland to access the river. And I can give the easement for all the town people. And also, my engineering firm, I mean, high engineering and the TEC already agree with all the common. And Mass Department Highway already approved twice with the home improvement store, also with the TEC, I mean, suggest for a shopping center. They also approved the access for the existing, I mean, they all think, I mean, the impact is very, very little. And also, Fire Department already approved it. And I have joined the new, I mean, Elm Parkway, Elm Square Committee, and we talk about how to build better, I mean, downtown for Groveland, and we all have a very good idea, I mean, only thing we don't want is, we don't want the building up there, nobody live with a vacuum, I mean, it's deteriorate every day. And this building is very deteriorate right now, the roof is leak, and I have all the building material already bought on site, and very good put onto the roof. And I'm just ask the town, give me the opportunity, I mean, to put this building into use, that I can put the roof on, I mean. So, if you have any more question or anything you can ask me, or I can ask my engineering. Yeah, we also, I mean, the post office, post office already agree with all their plan.
Did your engineer want to just speak to some of the changes to the plan that you've done since the last, the last meeting?
Yeah, basically, we listened to what you said in the last meeting, and I think it was a nonstarter to have any parking in the front here, so the decision was made to ask for a variance to be allowed to have 10 parking spaces on site to cover the uses. We also, as I said, met with the post office, and the post office was happy as having the handicap space moved back here. Actually, they indicated that there's not a much of a traffic problem with the post office, even around Christmas time. They said, it's, it's, there's not a lot of traffic, there's not a lot of cars coming once to the post office, and that's meeting with their regional development guy, I guess he was actually. The other changes that we made were, we eliminated some spaces here to improve the ability to back into the loading area. My client went to the fire department, and we indicated that a fire apparatus that was parked on Main Street, which is where we told you people originally, could fight the fire from there, and we showed them how the, all of the structures are within the 50 to 150-foot distance, which was their criteria as far as fighting a fire. So, they gave us a, I think it was actually a email that said that they didn't have a problem with the site plan. You know, we've been back and forth with your consulting engineers about what the traffic generation was and what it should be. He's indicated several different types of uses, but the bottom line is most any traffic generated that you take the ITE generation from is going to be quite small, because the building is small, so the numbers are never going to come out very big. And the state highway has agreed that if the increases are small, there is not a new permit required. I think I explained last time, that while this is a use under the Groveland zoning bylaws, it's not a change in use as far as the state is concerned. The state really only has residential and commercial access. This being commercial and there are other accesses residential. So, it's not a change in use, that doesn't trigger new state highway permit, and if there is not a significant increase in traffic, that doesn't... We had a requirement for a new permit either, and we submitted a memo that we got from the state relative to that. We did change, if you recall, we had a different front configuration here. We now got the main entrance here with the handicap ramp here, because this handicap space has to service this building as well. And I think that basically kind of explains the changes that we made. I think the big issues are, we no longer have any parking in the front, because that seems to be a nonstarter with the Board of Appeals, and we're asking for a variance to allow a total of 10 spaces on the site.
Anything else? That's it?
No, I think that pretty much covers what we did.
I have a question. What do you intend on doing with the front of the building? It is paved now.
Yeah.
I'm not sure we need to eliminate parking completely personally, but I never, that was never, parking in that space was never a concern for me, but I suspect if it's paved and it's left open, then people are going to park there anyway. So, we should probably either allocate parking space there, or somehow block it so that people can't park there, if we're going to say it's not for parking.
Well...
I'm not sure what the intention is for the space, it's...
Well, because it's in the, if there's parking there, then it's in the parking setback, so, which is according to the bylaw. So, the idea is to try to move them back behind the parking setback line, because it's pretty clear in the bylaw that you really shouldn't have any parking in the front setback.
But it's also pretty clear that we should have more parking available, so, those two things are conflicting in the bylaws for this, either way. Either we approve one way or the other way, we're going against the bylaws, strictly speaking.
If you consider the small shop, small store across the street with the 292 Main Street, they have twice amount of living space, but they won't have 12 parking over there. That's it. So, so, over there, there are so much, I mean, office space, I mean, and they won't have 12, and they would have a pretty much same...
Yeah, but they have the public parking right in that same space.
Yeah, because I can use the public...
For yours, you'd have to cross the street, so it's a little bit less convenient for the public parking, but...
I already tried to reduce as little as I can, I, all I'm asking, I wanted to reduce the parking.
So, as far as the parking goes, planning board to get that according to the zoning bylaw, we can say whether we're in favor or not, or we can say what we recommend, I guess, and, and then they can, because my understanding is you're not done with planning, right? You still have one more or a couple more to go?
Right, they didn't have a forum. We thought it was going to be a day before the planning board, before we came back to you, and it would've worked out better, but they didn't have a forum for the last meeting on, I think it was March 26th.
Okay.
Excuse me.
April, right.
It's May, just like in the meeting.
I was flying by. Do you want to see if there's any comments from others, or...
Yeah, we do have a comment, we have a comment to read. Is there any public comments you'd like to add?
Yes, do I need to go up there?
Yes, please, introduce yourself.
Either up there, or...
Give me a second. Yeah, I will. Okay.
James Bevel Aqua, 26 Coleman Road, lifetime resident. I'm very familiar with the property, I used to manage some of the property nearby. My biggest concern, I have more than a couple concerns, but my biggest concern is, when I'm trying to drive out of the post office, there's not enough space for another car to come in. So, the, when I'm exiting, I'm blocking the entrance, and when I'm entering the place, I'm blocking the exit. The curb cut seems to be all off-center, and, I mean, I, it doesn't make sense to me. It seems very dangerous, at the very least, inconvenient. And that's now, without expanding the use of this property. I foresee problems. And have you done a site visit?
Yes.
So, you're familiar a little bit with what I'm speaking of?
Yes.
All right, so I'm very concerned with safety and people, especially older folks, trying to get to the post office. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I could perhaps respond to that. We discussed that quite a bit in the initial filing. In order to address that situation, we're widening with some pavers in that location, and we discussed it at quite great length with the post office, Mr. Madden, the representative, and he didn't see any problem with what we were suggesting, and he did not say that there was a problem with access to the post office. As long as we move that handicap space back, he just wanted the handicap space to be back near the handicap ramp. So, I think what we've done, and I actually think your consulting engineers agree that we'll have the space if we widen out the paving in that grassed area in front of the post office.
You know, speaking on, rebuttal from what he's speaking of, when you're trying to exit the property, and you want to turn right, so you'd be going over the bridge or up River Road, you have to swing far to the right side of the curb cut, excuse me, to the left side, in order to get around. When you do pull out, you're blocking traffic that is going west. I don't, I understand, I've seen the plans, they're talking about pavers. Again, it, it just doesn't seem to be enough space between the guardrail and where the curb cut ends on the east side. It really speaks for itself, drive in, drive out. If someone tried to go in that direction while someone's trying to exit, it's not even possible, blocking traffic every which way. There's also a crosswalk, stoplight, stop line. If you're trying to get out of the property, and again, if you're going to go west, you're on top of a, the stop line and the crosswalk. Like I said, it speaks for itself, you just have to give it a whirl, and it's pretty difficult.
We have discussed that at length at previous meetings. Thank you.
Any other comments? Wanted to read in...
No, but I'd actually quite prefer to just listen, and I'm happy to get up after you read the comment, I'm really curious as to what it says.
We got a email from Gregory Stark Jr. of one-off, Kingway, Groveland, Massachusetts. Says, "I would like to share my concerns about the gas station property at 299 Main Street. As a fellow businessperson, I sympathize with the need to establish income and, on a commercial property, but I do not agree we should allow any compromises which impact our small-town square. We should not set precedence of functionality and aesthetic problems moving forward. From my experience of talking with townspeople, they would like to see a use which utilizes the riverfront property as a complement to the beautiful Elm Park. The goal should be in, should be an articulate, professional plan," yes, "which everyone could be proud of. "The property is a centerpiece of our square and should be representative of our community." And he went on, "Points of concern, and obviously misplaced state curb opening in middle of Route 113, signal stop area, unclear usage and lack of a professional building improvement plan, inadequate parking and maneuvering for postal trucks, postal patrons, plus need of unspecified use of an auto garage and missed major disrepair." And the last word, "I am very concerned that the town does not make compromises which they will regret in the long run. Groveland Town Square has very obvious parking issues. Presently, there is not a completed study or resolution to the parking problem. This sounds like we will be adding to the existing problem. Thank you, Greg Stark." We have anything else that anybody would like to add?
Yeah. Please.
My name is Brian Connell. I operate the business Norwood Insurance, which is the butter, which is a tenant of Groveland Square LLC, which owns the property at 293 and 291 Main Street. There were a number of things that were brought up at the last meeting when I attended. My understanding is, in my view, most of the concern was around the safety of ingress and egress of that parcel with that one curb cut and the way that it's situated. I wanted to just go through just a couple of the comments from actually the board, you know. Biggest issue is the curb cut, is it 22, is it 23, is it 24 feet? The handicap ramp in alignment, I think some of that's been addressed, but maybe for one side, but not for the other. The study of whether or not, you know, hydroponic store was specialty use, and it sounds like the, the plan is changing again to a couple of other, I don't know what, you know, home improvement superstore. I would doubt anything superstore would real, where, where that is, or some of the other usage there. The fire department, I certainly get that, but the state saying that there's very little traffic impact, I think that's because that's primarily been used for egress, and I think some of our customers that, as I'd mentioned in the past, I'm not out there clicking to figure out how many of our thousand Norwood customers are going into the post office or not, and as such, I would assume that there's probably plenty of ingress on our side and egress on the other. But I, I'm kind of surprised that the post office agreed to a plan and never said that there was no impact of traffic in that area at Christmas time. I've only spent two Christmases there, and it's bonkers. It's really quite, quite something to see. But, all that notwithstanding, my, my kind of core concerns around some of this is that, you know, we're here today to establish, from what I understand, variances. How many variances are you guys voting on? I'm curious also as to the voting, does that mean that you need to, what would typically be five members? Do you have to have three of four to approve? How many variances and how many votes are needed to approve?
We approve a variance, we require four votes, four positive votes.
Okay. And how many variances are in this plan? And forgive me if I'm asking rudimentary, I'm not a city planner.
I don't have the application here, I don't know specifically what they're...
Six.
Because I, I actually, the reason I'm asking is, I've done a bit of due diligence. I saw some of the, I think, some of the ideas around why you'd be approving variances, right? And from what I understand, it's, you know, general 40A, Section 10 for variances, and if I can kind of paraphrase a few of the things here, is that the permit granting authorities specifically finds that owing to circumstances related to soil conditions, shape, topography of such land use, that this would be an extraordinary act, right, to follow literal enforcement of the provisions, and that this would be a hardship financially or otherwise. And I'm trying to understand how this applies to that. Can someone tell me that? It's a pretty strict statute, and those are four pretty specific areas that you're about to approve, and I just want to make sure that we're being thoughtful, notwithstanding what, you know, I kind of agree with what Greg Stark said. You know, this should be kind of the centerpiece of Groveland, and I feel like we're just trying to jam something in to get something approved, and I don't understand it myself. I'm in opposition to it, but we're doing some extraordinary acts to try to approve this plan. And if I just look at the curb cut alone, I don't feel that this has merits, just from a standpoint of traffic pattern, what impact that will have on the square, what that will have personally for us as an abutter, as an impact to us and our business and traffic. People may want to avoid going to Norwood Insurance and go across the bridge to Sullivan or up the street to Andrews, right? So these are very personal things that could cause me financial hardship, not to mention the property value of 293 and 291 Main Street. And if this is a very congested, busy area, by causing this ingress and egress through this curb cut, that could be a very difficult situation and perhaps cause decline in property values, right? It seems to me that Groveland just made some pretty big leaps with, you know, the improvement of the school, which should improve property values, and we should be looking forward, not trying to kind of pigeonhole something from the past. So that's personally, but from a hardship standpoint, there was a couple of things that I, just going back and forth with the planning board, and I've got some information that I can give to you, but from a hardship standpoint, if it doesn't, you know, meet those soil or the shape, not size, but shape, all of these different things, then that can be appealed after the fact. One of the things that I think's important, and I brought this up, and I'm going to give this to all of you, is that the literal enforcement of the zoning bylaws also will not involve substantial hardship to this person. And this is citing from Daniels versus the Marshfield Planning Board. And it says that her alleged hardship is really the loss of economic advantage. And it goes on to say, "The property was purchased as an investment opportunity. This is not sufficient to show substantial hardship." See Kirkwood 17, Mass. Appeals Court at 431. Nor will deprivation of potential economic advantage to a landowner qualify as substantial hardship. So to me, I recognize and can sympathize with Mr. Yang and what he's going through because he purchased this, but he has not been presented with the hardship. The person who owned the property prior to this was presented with a hardship by the land-taking, and that's why she was paid $619,000 for that service station. So these are all things that I think should go into your decision-making, and I would hope that you would vote in opposition of approving such a plan to move forward. We are both on the same Elm Square Committee. I do want to see something improved here. One of the biggest topics that came up at our first and only committee meeting was parking. And from what I can see, we're going from 17 to 10. So we're going the wrong way. And if we're going to 10 from 17, we've lost seven. Where are they going to pick this up? Is it going to be in the nine spots across the street? Is it going to be in our driveway? Is it going to be next door? These are all important considerations, so I would respectfully give that back to you, and I'm in opposition. I think that's pretty clear, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
So from my standpoint is the town of Groveland and Mass. Department, Highway Department, built a new bridge and benefits the whole town people. And this site and have impact for it, that's negative? That's the reason why I need to ask a variance for this, because the state built the bridge caused this site. So, and also, I mean, I want to try work with town to maximum to use this site to benefit for the whole town, I mean. So, for the parking, in terms of parking, I mean, you along it, you see the business across the street from the post office, they are twice the amount of square footage, and they want to have 12 parking. They use the public parking. I should be fair to everybody else to use the parking too, I mean. So, and I'm open work with town, I mean, to get the best use for this building, I mean. I'm asked right now, I want to have the usage for the building, I mean. I think if I don't have the usage, I mean, that's the hardship, I mean.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
I said, "If I don't have the usage for the building, this will be cost financial difficult for me and also this is hardship too."
Thank you.
I have one question, if I don't know if you or we have any resources. There's been a lot of discussion about the bridge creating the hardship and how that impacts the property. Do we have a plan, a site plan from before the bridge was added and see what property existed before that?
Yeah.
And what was actually, what the impact was?
Over the one, I have over the one. I gave to the planning board, the first engineer.
This is small, but this is what the lot looked like when it was originally done.
Yeah.
The bridge was over here. This was the layout. And essentially, this went right straight across like this.
Mm-hmm.
And of course, there was free access here.
Do you have the size of the lot that was, the overall size of the lot?
I believe it's on that.
Twenty-six thousand nine hundred and ninety, roughly.
Right. So it's almost 27,000 feet, so they took about 8,000 feet. The land-taking was 6,225 feet. And if I could address that, just, I'm not sure.
So again, just the before and after on this is really not the point from a standpoint of the variance and the ruling of the variance. The hardship was of the prior owner, who was paid $619,000 for that property, for only the 6,000 square feet of the 29,000 thereabouts. But the hardship was not created for the new owner. The new owner knew that there was a land-taking, that deed had been marked and redone, the land-taking was right in there, and they bought it for substantially less at 370,000 for the entire property, which was roughly, I believe, what the assessed value was for just the post office. So they did receive it at a bargain, and as a result of which, because the challenges with the property. And that gets back to, is it a soil? Is it a shape? Is it a topology? Is it a structure? And I'll take you back to the fact that this, the alleged hardship is really the loss of an economic advantage. This is not sufficient to show substantial hardship, and there's case law on this proving this. I just want to be clear on that. So I understand that the property looked differently before the bridge, and it looks quite differently after the bridge. It was on the market from, from what I understand, was since the original land-taking, and after that whole six- or seven-year period, there was one person that purchased it, and it was this gentleman here, and he purchased it for what he set market as of 370,000. But the challenges didn't appear after that, they were there before he bought it. So I just want to be on record with that.
Did you get a chance to look at this? John, did you get a chance to look at that?
I just wanted, I mean, to tell the board member, I mean, if this building was not usage and the Mass. Department Highway were tear down, the reason they did not tear down, they did not pay for it. So the building is a pre-existing building, and the building, and if not used, it would be a hardship. I mean, they did not take the building, they did not pay for the building, so.
That's just a copy of those documents.
What is this?
It's the copy of the land-taking and the case law that I just cited. So just, I've highlighted sections, it's an excerpt, obviously.
Did you have a copy for the clerk also? Did you give her one? He just handed that out to all the board members, Rebecca, so I asked him to give you a copy.
Yeah, I just need them for public record and notice to not violate open meeting law.
Just so you know, so what you're reading is, the first two pages are two pages from the complete appraisal, which I do now have a copy of and that I can send on. That just gives you the understanding that what was taken, what the appraiser, independent licensed body, state of Massachusetts, said the property would be worth after the taking, and that's what's highlighted on page two. So the value on page one, what it would be worth, page two, from, you know, usage. Page three is the case law that I was citing, which was against the Marshfield Zoning Board of Appeals by Daniel. And then the last page is what I was talking about on the fact that the loss of an economic
Can I say one more thing? So I just, and this, I just wanted to talk about one more thing, I mean. So for the planning board, the engineering already provided engineer enjoying to see the traffic is okay, and the town engineer, peer engineer also agree with the traffic will be okay on the site. And also, I mean, I was surprised from the town, I mean, this has been for 10 years, and this curb cut is always over there, and town agree with it, all the neighbor agree with it. If somebody disagreed, I wish somebody raised this one 10 years ago, not right now. 10 years ago, you have opportunity when they build a bridge, how do they build a bridge, where is curb cut? You have the voice to raise at that time, but nobody raised at that time. So that means everybody agree with that time.
I'd just respectfully mention on that one, Lee, that there's been nothing occupying that side, the former service station. I don't know that everyone was pleased with the way that the curb cut came out, but without having the other structure populated, I don't think that that would cause anyone to be up in arms about it because it had the curb cut left for the post office. What we're talking about is entirely different, which is now populate that other parcel of the property and have traffic in and out and ingress easy, ingress with the new site
And I really agree with it, I mean, I can just use a by appointment store, no traffic most of the time, only by appointments.
Any more public comment? Anyone? She closed the public hearing and then go to deliberation.
I don't know. I think this...
Do you guys have any other questions before we close public hearing?
Do you have any more questions for them?
Well, we can ask questions during...
Yeah.
Afterwards, but can we close the public hearing?
Well, one of the questions I have...
Okay.
It seems to me one of the hanging points from everybody is this double in-and-out curb cut. Now, when the customers come in for the insurance company, they come in this driveway.
Yes.
Yes.
And by and large, I think they come around onto the other property and leave by the post office cut. That right now, we only, we figure it's one way. Everybody uses, it just comes out in a big loop.
I suspect it happens a lot for both.
I think, that's what I'm saying. But they don't come out, they don't come out that driveway, they go in here. And I guess my question is, can the two neighbors kind of figure this thing out so we don't have a double in-and-out curb cut here? Because if they get mad at each other and a fence goes up here, everybody loses. But it would seem to me the Norwood's going to lose more. How are they going to get traffic in and out of there?
They actually have a lot of space back here to turn around.
I understand that part, but this is very narrow. And it would seem to me they could get along maybe and work something out if there's a desire there. I'm not telling you your business, I'm simply throwing ideas up in the air. Because in and out here is tough, you know, at the gas station.
Excuse me, John.
Yeah.
Norwood also has an adjacent parking lot right next door that they can also use.
Yeah. Oh, I understand, I get that part.
Yeah.
You know, I'm just saying, this will narrow you guys up, your good driveway.
I think in this day and age, a lot of insurance is being done online.
I get it.
So there's a lot of postal business though.
We had this discussion, we had this discussion today as to who would...
I don't think, I don't think anybody's going to win if that gets blocked off. That's my point.
So I have approached the Norwood Insurance many times. I'm all for, I mean, any kind of expensive share. I'm also all for, I mean, any kind of agreement, we can, we can work with it. And I got a response, says no. And all they ask is, they want to buy this property, they want to buy from me for the low price. And all they ask is they want to buy this property. They want to buy from me for the low price. And I don't want to sell it.
Would you like me to address that? The public hearing is still open?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, the property that is owned is first and foremost not owned by Norwood Insurance Agency. It's owned by Groveland Square LLC, two completely separate entities. And Bevel Aqua, who's my mother-in-law owns the building. Amongst other properties that are within Groveland LLC, not just two ninety-three and not just two ninety-one, were a tenant, number one. So, my interest here is twofold, as in a butter business, but also representing my mother-in-law. From a standpoint of the, how do I put this delicately? So, I, I was asked that, well, I guess first and foremost was told several times that we share this driveway. This is our driveway, not Ian's driveway, their driveway collectively. It's not. Let's put that to rest. Number two, when I was discussing this with Lee in between the last meeting and this meeting, I said that I'll speak with Ann and discuss with her if she's willing to provide you with an easement. She was not. And I said, if this would make it easier for you, I would buy the property out because quite frankly, I would probably be one of the ones that would only have interest because I have both curb cuts. So, we're talking about financial hardship because this gentleman purchased a property with one curb cut in and out, which is a terrible curb cut because half of it is directly in front of the building. So, if, if I gave him a path to the door to say, hey, I would help you out and I would purchase this for what, that, that was a private matter between he and I. But since he brought it up, I thought I'd address it. I think it's important that you know that. We are not looking to buy dilapidated gas stations and parcels and post offices. We're not. But to be in control of that asset and to your comment, John, to have both the ingress and egress, it would obviously behoove not only the town, but probably to a great degree us, more so than someone just having one curb cut. As Jim had mentioned, we do have a parking area next door that we could send our customers to very easily. We could ingress and egress from that curb cut quite easily compared to the other curb cut. And since we own the vast majority behind, all the way to the other side of the post office, behind the post office, we cut right up, as you can see on the plan, across where that driveway is. So, we don't have a very vested interest to try to oppose this. What we're opposed to is creating a traffic nightmare right in the center of town to not extend the Elm Park across to just have a nice access and instead try to force fit and retrofit something in to a gas station that was built in nineteen sixty-three. We do oppose that because I don't think that's quite frankly in the best interest of the town. So, I, I just want to go on record with that since I feel like I was challenged on that. I was also told that maybe he should go after me with a prescriptive easement to try to take access of our property. I also know that this gentleman at the planning board had on film offered a thousand dollars to say that, can you forego this site survey? I also know that one of our customers, again, not the owner of the property, but one of our customers who's on the planning board, was threatened with an ethics violation if he did not vote in favor of this gentleman.
I don't think this discussion is at all appropriate.
I, I, I just, I just.
I can't imagine that you're allowing it to go on.
They're, they're in the minutes. They're on film. So, and, and I believe, I believe the planning board is actually going on record with that. So, I would leave it at that. I just want to defend myself because it sounds like I'm being challenged as to some sort of ethics violation where I'm trying to blow up his plan to purchase his property, and it's just simply not true.
So, since you speak of this, I want to clear, clear myself, I mean. From the planning board, where initially I think this is an existing property, should be very simple. So, what I offer to them is that can we use the money for the peer review and engineering money to donate to the town? So, we can have a less amount, this kind of work, because I thought it's simple. I thought it would be benefits for the town, benefits for me, benefits for everybody. So far, my engineering already cost over twenty-two thousand, twenty-two thousand dollar right now. I think it's ridiculous for the board and to ask the people for that small property to spend that much engineering money in two years, over, over twenty-two thousand right now already, and spend a lot of money, I mean, for the town engineer to review it. And town engineer and the manager already agree with the traffic, it will be okay. We should respect the decision from the engineering. The second, second thing is to say that for the board member, I never said it. I'm just really concerned. I even asked, can I take this word back? But Secretary said I cannot take it back. But I think it's the board member to disclose themselves to the, I never said anybody. If he feels it's red, I apologize for that. I never meant to it. Because what I, what I thought is that I showed the drawing. I mean, he insisted to say engineering drawing is not correct. He insisted the driveway. Everything is belong to the insurance company because he listened from insurance company. Said that this is their driveway. Everything is there. I couldn't present for them. So, I was concerned. I never said.
Thank you. If there are no other public comments, I think I will, I will raise a motion to close the public comments section.
Second, all in favor? Aye. I did have one question. The small parcel that's ten dash A, the little square effectively in the back. That implies that, yeah, it's owned by the town?
Yeah.
Is that, is that, any of that paved or is that all just grass?
Fortunately, it's paved.
So, some of this paved space is actually that property?
I believe so. There's a donation box sitting there.
Yeah, I can see it in the, I saw it in the pictures. I can't tell exactly how far back it goes though.
It was on a list of liquidated properties they decided to keep.
Do you recall, John, when we were on site? To me, when we were sort of walking this line, do you remember that? When we were walking the line in the back area?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
It did seem like that donation box was on that town.
Yeah, I can see it here. You can definitely tell it is past. I mean, this is roughly that property line through here, and a lot of this space in here is.
Right, because, yeah, it was sort of unclear as we were walking. It was like, okay, well, where. But there are survey pins that were there that we were sort of following.
We walked the pins.
Right, we were trying to walk the pins to see how far. It actually did go this way. Did you see that, Chris?
What is the access to that? Who owns the box and how was that accessed?
The land lock, so that is.
But did they get permission from anyone with the box?
I'm sure the town's going to enjoy that little triangle of land.
I mean, I am just, you know, well, I mean, there's a lot of questions there, certainly. But I, I'm not concerned about the town owning landlocked land. It's just a question of how, you know, why it's in use or something other than just open space. I'm curious where that box came from and. Basically, I'm wondering because there is, there could theoretically be considered parking space there if it is public land that's paved with that box on it. And the other question is, how is that box accessed? Because that would be questions of what is an established easement? How long has it been there and all that kind of stuff? So, I have absolutely no idea what, just a weird situation.
That land's been only there a couple.
No, no, the land's been there forever. The, the box is only there.
The box, okay.
Okay.
I think that behind the post office, they had access to it, all I can.
Yeah. I mean, certainly access through the post, you know, through the post office property. I'm just not sure who's actually doing that. And just trying to figure out exactly where, where the paved space, what, what property that actually exists on.
All right, Andy, what other discussions?
Well, I mean, I think just overall, I think, you know, the, the curb cuts still, I think, I think everyone, you know, you know, agrees and comments to that, right? I'm somewhat concerned that the parking is insufficient at the, at the site. And parking is what at the site? It is sufficient.
Is sufficient?
Right. When you take into consideration both the post office and the potential new, new business to be on, beyond the former gas station property, I'm still not concerned that, that, that parking should be sufficient, even if it is low, whatever we want to call it, by appointment only, or, you know, however we want to phrase that.
No, and I also don't want to specifically create a variance for a specific business.
Right.
I don't think that's in anybody's best interest.
And then, then, you know, when you get into issues like, you know, loading into and out of that, that new potential site that needs to be, you know, some access there, which doesn't seem to be accounted for. And again, and I still think, you know, traffic pattern in and of itself is still a major issue as well.
Any other, did you have any other comment?
I mean, I have just reservations just as, as the whole, just, it's just really, yeah, and I think that some of that still fall in the, you know, best for the sake of the town issue, but.
Okay. Jason?
Nothing that hasn't been discussed.
John?
I'm sorry, I, I, I still don't like the double curb, but, you know, in and out on that curb cut.
Anything else? Any other thoughts?
Bless yourself.
Tech mentioned something about Concon. Do, do, does, do they have to get that squared away?
Yeah, I think I saw something about the, you know.
If, if, if there's any waste disposal needed, if there's an allotment for that.
I thought that was addressed with barrels from, um, waste management? Waste management had given them a quote of some sort that they would come and take up certain barrels. I'm sorry?
The, the front, they had a question about adding, about the modification to the, the dry, the paved area or the paving stones.
I don't want to supersede them.
Right, so, but anything that we do could be subject to.
Right.
So, I think we have, you know, I'm sorry, I don't want to take you notes. I think we have some different options. Question is, who wants to make a motion for any which option?
Do you have one other, one question? I don't know if anybody's actually going to know the answer to this, but a, a commercial lot with two separate buildings, how does that apply to the zoning requirements of the lot? Is it a lot as a whole, even if it is multiple buildings? Because residential, two separate buildings would be impactful to the lot and the requirements of that lot. But I'm not sure if that is true in commercial. I don't know if that's specifically addressed in our bylaws.
I don't think it's specifically addressed, however.
Basically, does this, is this basically have to be two, considered two separate businesses on one lot in terms of meeting the requirements? Or is it effectively have to meet the requirements of two separate lots?
Well, but it's not two separate lots.
I know it's not two separate lots, but in terms of it's two separate businesses and two separate buildings, not even just two, you know, there's basically two separate buildings, and I'm not sure how that meets because the requirement for area I know is twenty thousand square feet for, for the lot.
Right.
But is that twenty thousand square feet per building or per?
It doesn't specify.
It doesn't really.
No. It just says for commercial, it has to be in that zone. It needs, the lot needs to be.
Trying to figure out how it's all, what, what the actual.
Because if you think about it this way, right? Just, just for argument's sake. If you had a lot that was non-conforming, and it was supposed to be twenty thousand, but it's nineteen thousand. Theoretically, if this were all one building and not two buildings, let's say it was.
Yeah.
Fourteen hundred and eighty-seven plus nineteen twenty-nine, whatever that is, and that were one building. I, I'm not sure it would be that different. See what I'm saying?
No, yeah, I understand, but strictly, we do call that out if there are two build, you know, that we don't allow two buildings in residential explicitly. And I just wasn't sure if that was ever addressed in any of the, the business side of it.
In fact, when I first saw this plan, I was shocked that they weren't, I always assumed they were separate lots.
Well.
I couldn't imagine why it was done that way in the beginning, but just seemed kind of odd to me, but. Probably done back in.
Lots have a lot of oddities in places.
I agree. I remember when the, whichever one was up first, I would have sublimated that lot and put the other.
Yeah, it seems odd to me that they wouldn't have done that, but, but what's done is done. So, now we're basically stuck with what's left. So, we have a few different options. Does anyone want to make a motion in one way or the other, or anything?
I, I think he, I don't think he owned it. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, he was just leasing the gas station. Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's always, I mean, I wouldn't say always, but.
Yeah, I mean, these maps go back certainly before. I mean, I have the maps that show, strictly speaking, the land that was taken is a separate lot. But that was basically, I don't know if this was done at the time they set that up or what, but this is the actual, this is the Groveland owned space. This is ten dash one, and then there is a ten dash one B, but it's not the full gas station space. Effectively, the part that was taken, more or less. From the looks of it, at least, as far as I can tell from between trying to match these two up.
Right, this part.
With the bridge that was moved over.
So, this doesn't exist anymore, so it's only this. Okay. Any other comments, questions, discussion?
Well, I guess if we are going to, I mean, this is the, we have the application. I haven't looked over any changes in the application itself.
I have it here.
I read through it online, on the email, but I didn't get a change.
Yeah, this was the new, the new one that was updated based on the new updated plan. Here it is. They addressed the changes in the parking. It has some in my notes, I'll also ignore those.
Is there actually a motion to do one of these things next?
Yes, that's, those are the three different options. Someone make a motion for something.
Not as far as the parking is concerned.
So what is?
Well, if you got nothing with that, if you do that, then you have to say what those would be.
Right, right.
And then, not necessarily, but you could. Whatever you, you know, whatever you feel. Any other? Means like, whatever. Anything else from the right side over here?
I just, do we want to review what the actual variances are on the new plan? I don't think we ever actually covered what the-
Well, so this, this is a list of the basics. So I sort of went through and just made some changes based on the change in the plan.
Yeah.
So these were due to that. And then this has to, this would have to be, um.
Certainly, I don't think they're in the front setback.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Could you give, give a copy of that to Rebecca as well?
Yes.
Do you have another copy?
Do you have any more copies of that or just one? Do you have one for everyone, including Rebecca?
I was just going to read through it so that. So the variance requested is a lot size reduction from twenty thousand to nineteen thousand. A side setback from ten feet to seven feet.
Thank you.
Front setback from thirty feet to nine feet. Rear from thirty to four feet. And a parking, the parking setback has been removed. So the, all the, this setback requests are due to the existing building locations.
And parking setback at one, on the back side and one front?
So one, yeah. So the parking setback in the rear to one foot. And then we have a drive aisle reduced from twenty-four feet to nineteen feet. And then we have requests for a special permit in the hours of operation from eight AM to eight PM, Monday through Sunday. Um, max number of employees is two. Parking max limit reduced to ten.
Which actually-
Which is actually in the variance, I think.
Well, but that would need to be granted by planning. They're the only ones that can do the, the actual parking reduction.
Reduction. Ours is just where the parking is in relation to the setbacks.
But if you were inclined to do so, you could make it so that it would be conditioned upon that being approved by planning. Makes sense?
Yes.
Okay.
Maximum square footage of the building is one thousand nine hundred and twenty-nine. What is that?
That's your square footage, I thought.
Yeah.
I, I, I saw that when you write it, that division, I saw that you always put the, the square footage, that's why I read that.
Okay. Um.
But my only comment to that would be, um, if you do maximum square footage, see, you have to be careful because you have to include, you would have to include both buildings. You can't just say, you can't single one out because it is one lot, two buildings.
Material delivery for standard FedEx and UPS deliveries, which I'm assuming implies no large truck deliveries as a normal process. Business retail small. And that's about, uh, covers the requests.
Okay. Anyone want to make a motion?
Is, is there any more discussion or questions?
Anything, John?
No. Nope.
Rebecca, are we forgetting anything?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you, Sherwood. Want to ask yet?
All right. Uh, I would like to make a motion to, uh, to deny the special permit for, for use, uh, under section five point four, the Groveland bylaws, as a, the use is substantially more detrimental to the existing non-conforming use to the neighborhood. And also under section fourteen point six point one, as there will be an adverse effect to the town or neighborhood in view of the characteristics of the site and of the proposal in relation to the site.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. So. Rebecca? Do, is there a, um, you write the paperwork process of when the decision comes out? The only reason why I'm asking is when, when we made a decision, typically Julie would let the applicant know what the procedure is going from this point on, how many days they have for appeal, that kind of thing.
So we have fourteen days to provide a, a, our decision in writing. But then, after that fourteen day period, it will be timestamped with the town clerk. Then from the date from that timestamp, you'll have twenty day to appeal.
I just appear at the-
You can appeal based on?
At the, at the hearing, as we can call it.
So, for, for the appeal process, you, you should?
Hire an attorney.
Yes, I would definitely recommend that if you would, you like to appeal, that you should hire an attorney on the process.
But I, I do not see the reason, I mean, so what's the reason for that? You cannot write and read it with that, what's the reason for that? What's the reason?
I, I think you stated it. What did you say, what, you had your notes there.
Right.
And it'll be in the letter he gets.
Correct.
Essentially because we think the, you know, approving the special application would be more detrimental to the neighborhood than the current use. And, and that, that also it would be, you know, the approval of the special permit would be an adverse effect to the town and neighborhood.
Yeah, I don't think there's any one particular issue.
But the case is in, I think, which is zoning, I mean, so, and I think a bit, there's zoning, I mean, so.
But all that information will be given to you in your decision and then you'll have that information to work with. All of that will be written in the decision. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else to, to any, any other business group tonight?
Yeah, we did all that before you got here. We took care of all that other business before you got here. And-
Wow, maybe you can speak that a thing.
We didn't receive any other invoices or anything like that that I saw.
There was nothing that came through to, to me specifically, no.
And I haven't found anything like in the box or anything. So we haven't, we haven't actually posted a couple of legal notices in a couple of months, so that one, I think that last one that we received was already paid.
Okay.
And I believe we are closed out with the previous clerk's, um, reimbursements and things, so.
Okay.
As far as, we have no invoices, which is a first. We always have some sort of invoice to look at.
Go ahead. It's, this one has been the only one that's been ongoing recently, so.
Yeah.
And we didn't have Julie's invoice last month, so.
I thought we were going to get the application for the, um, you know, I don't, yes, we haven't gotten any yet.
Uh, I think.
So this one is for, um, Stanley, um, Bobby.
Right.
Yes.
His engineer, and forgive me for the, you know, you shouldn't have named him, but I think it's Dale. Um, had contacted me and stated that he is going to file for his application before the tenth of the month and get on your four year June meeting.
Okay.
Um, so he has not filed yet. He's also going to be coming before the planning board, um, to decide whether or not he needs to, uh, file for a modification versus substantial change based on the changes that he's made. So he's actually going to be before the planning board on May seventh. And again, specifically as a discussion item, not necessarily for any application, just to try to kind of get a feel for a definite book proposition we need to, um, move forward for the planning board to study. However, he had gone before the conservation commission for the changes that he had proposed. And the conservation commission has heard that and reviewed it and actually approved those changes.
Okay.
So it really will be just a refiled with the zoning board of appeals based upon the new, um, I believe it's the drive-through aspect of it that he's adding. So it's a new special permit and really zoning board of appeals, so it needs to be renoticed, all that other stuff. And then again, for, for planning, it's just an understanding of whether or not substantial change, insubstantial change, modification, or refile.
Okay, so is there, is there any way you can keep this one, or do I have to refile or on, on the screen call? Or what do I need to change and in order to, you know, take, I take consultation?
So at, so at this point, your option is to, to, to appeal the decision of the board?
But you need to wait for the decision to come out first.
And I think right now that, that is your, that is your only avenue, I believe, correct?
Okay. But for the future, you take consultation, what do you want I change? What I need to change in order to, because building will stay with it for, for forever. I don't have the money to tear it down. I'm not going to tear it down. So what do you want I do?
Mr. Lee, we're, we're not asking you to tear it down and all, and.
But you, but you do it over there.
Mr. Lee, please.
Yeah.
Uh, we're, we're not here to give you suggestions on what you should do. We're here to discuss, debate, and vote on the application you put in front of us. That's our, that's our purpose.
But I think it's, it's not fair, I mean, I don't know. I just feel it's not fair to time this. I feel it's not fair. I'm going to go to your place. I'm going, I'm going to take time to look over it.
Sorry, you killed that.
It's not fair.
All right.
So the only thing I just wanted to add to the board real quick and as an open discussion as I provided in the package, um, schedule. Um, before, um, moving forward in terms of putting it online for potential applicants, I just wanted to make sure that the board was okay with that schedule. Um, I know some of the dates, uh, may change based upon current issues and holidays and things of that nature. But just to stick with the, with the, you know, this is generally when we meet. And we can make some further updates, um, as needed, like in the first line, if, you know, January meeting. Like we can go and, and update that again as needed, but to have something for people to see exactly, you know, when we meet. Um, and then also because it's the last meeting, the board had voted on, uh, a new way to do legal notices. Um, I put up a new procedure in, in doing that. And, um, I wanted just to make sure that they also knew that they had certain deadlines that we could hold them to and that the board had also vetted to make sure that that was okay. Um, and then also getting you all of the plans and documentations prior to the meeting. I don't think that, I mean, I know everything was supposed to be in, but like filed by the tenth, but I don't know if anything was supposed to be like delivered. So that was the other thing I wanted to see, if the board wanted to bring that date back to the tenth or the Friday before would be sufficient. Um, I, I, I'm, I wasn't too sure exactly what procedure you wanted to clear place, but I wanted to make sure you were okay with it again before closing. Uh, so I would welcome any feedback or comments so that I can make that better for the board.
No, I think.
I think the schedule's okay, I suppose.
I think the schedule's great, but.
Yeah.
And thank you for that.
I know, it's like a big deal. I know it seems small, but it was like a big deal for me too, to be able to kind of sort of see it in black and white. But also, um, as far as changes go, I, my personal opinion is I would like to see any changes, whatever's submitted on the tenth is submitted on the tenth. And then anything, you know, because I think that gets really confusing. And when you have all different versions of many different things, it, it gets, and when you're trying to like catch up on email and you're a volunteer, you're trying to like keep up with everything.
Exactly, and getting the attachments at the last, the last second.
Yeah, that's hard.
Thank you for sending those, but it's still, it's a.
Yeah, it's just, but in general, I think sometimes you have to, you know, make allowances. But, um, I think in general, whatever would be submitted on the tenth should be what's reviewed at the next meeting. Unless extenuating circumstances.
Okay.
That would be my opinion.
No, that makes sense, I can remove that, that portion and we'll just stick with that as, as, as the policy for moving forward.
Yeah, unless there's some extenuating
Yeah.
circumstance that has to change. Like the planning board makes them change it or something like that, like in this case, we found that.
Okay.
You know, the planning board recommended changes and so we wanted to make sure we were reviewing the most recent plan. I think that makes sense, but.
Understood.
In general, the application should come in on the tenth, be reviewed.
Make it hard and fast on the tenth.
Yes. Because that gets a slippery slope quickly.
It takes all the gray area out.
Exactly.
That makes sense. And then.
And we can always continue it if there are changes.
Of course. And then my last other comment, and I, I told Kathy in email, I just didn't want anyone to know that, like, so you guys had files in here and you had files over in the vault and you guys had a files in different locations. So I just wanted to let you know that as the zoning board appealed, if you're looking for any of the files, I've merged them and, and combined them all in the planning department office. So if you're looking for a, all of them, they're all there and, and I have a spreadsheet I can share with you all as I, I stated. But just if you're looking for something specifically, it's, or if somebody's asking or somebody comes to you, just tell them to go to the planning office because that's where all the files are currently. Um, so if anything happens, just.
Perfect.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, Rebecca's really taken.
Thank you. Yeah, yeah, it's, uh, it's a good to have you aboard.
Yeah, really. She's a godsend.
I didn't know we had files.
Yes, we do.
Have you ever come to ConCon Groveland denied any, I mean, the, the board of appeal before?
I'm sorry?
Do you know any property, other, other application was denied before? Can you, I can get the copy of that?
Uh, you'd have to go to the town clerk for that, I believe, correct? Get your copies of past applications.
Past application was denied before for the board of appeal?
Yeah, yeah, off the top of, off the top of my head, it's, I, I don't know, I guess. I think you need to go, go to the town clerk and, and request some copies to do some research.
The answer, there have been applications denied.
What, what, yeah, I mean, was, was there anything was denied before, I mean, from before?
Yes, yeah, there have been applications denied.
If you put enough public information requests, then we can go through our files and see what we have for our files specifically.
Thank you, Rebecca.
So I think it's for the, for the planning board just continues, I, I get, there's, there's no meaning to, to.
I will, uh, we will need to discuss that. So I need to consult the chair on how he would like to move forward with that.
And is there any way I can have the copy of or whatever they said, they, 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 they?
From my understanding, and again, I have to check with the chair, because the zoning board of appeals has denied your application, then the planning board cannot make a determination because the use is not allowed and has not been approved by the zoning board of appeals. Therefore, they cannot approve the parking based upon the use that is not allowed. They cannot approve a site plan on the use that has not been allowed. So from my understanding, that would mean that the planning board would need to, um, also vote unfavorably on your application for not approving.
That's why I, there, 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 there's no meaning, just continues.
Well, doesn't continue, they would need to make a determination. I, I mean, you could withdraw without prejudice, but it, it wouldn't necessarily do anything in terms of your appeal period for, um, the two years. But I mean, it would either need to be denied or, or withdrawn. Or withdrawn with prejudice. Be actually the way it would go, so.
No, I just prefer continues, I mean.
And I can confirm with the chair, but my understanding is that it, it can't be continued.
Well, we're seeing. So is there any, can you, can you, can you, can you, for, for, to base divisions, or are you, are you, are you, are you?
By law, we have fourteen days.
You have to wait until the written decision is given to him, right?
Yes.
Yeah, you, you'll receive a written notice, detailing the decision.
You'll receive everything in writing. And then when you receive it, the clock starts to tick when you receive it. Okay?
But if all representative come into the court.
Again, I would suggest that you contact an attorney about the process and the procedure and we will do the same and contact our town council if it comes to that. But in terms of the legality to the situation, now that a decision has been issued, it's really not any of our concern to discuss it at this point in time.
Like to make a motion to close the May first meeting?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
At, what time is it?
Nine, ten P M.
Nine, ten P M?